Good morning, everybody out there today on this fifteenth, sixteenth of day of September. I'm so pleased to highlight a local heroine today on my show. We're super excited in this episode to feature Jean Herman, who is running for county commissioner. And I'm honestly just very honored to, to interview this Nevada-born independent thinker and action taker. Our listening audience today will soon come to the same conclusion that I have, I believe, about Jean and her upcoming race this November eighth. She will be aiming to resume her tenure on our Board of County Commissioners, of which she has successfully participated for almost eight years now. So as I jump into the interview, I want to briefly preface it with the vision statement that Jean has used in her campaign literature to give voters a solid picture of her values and her perspective on the current issues that we're dealing with in Washoe County. So on her website, Jean says that she is against abusive taxes and the practice of allowing developers to sue private citizens and their homes illegally. Jean is not a fan of wasteful government taxpayer spending or the preferential treatment of big established corporations over small businesses. She is, however, a true fan of useful learning. In other words, education for our children, not indoctrination or brainwashing, in other words. So she is not a fan of what is happening in our country, which is the force-feeding of something called critical race theory. She also holds that public lands belong to the state in which they lie and they are owned and managed, they should be managed by the people of that state. And lastly, that elections are sacred. Here, here, I agree with that for sure, and that they must be transparent, fair, and honest. So those are some, some bullet points on Ms. Jean Herman's website. And now for the exclamation point. There is a short film on your website, Ms. Jean, giving kind of your history in our county. And you look so elegant up on that beautiful horse that you're seeing in on your video. So are you a cowgirl, Ms. Herman?
Well, I guess a lot of people call me a cowgirl.
Well, you look like a beautiful cowgirl on that horse. Is that your horse?
It is.
Oh, and what's the horse's name?
Um, her name, or, you know, the name we call her by is red because she's definitely red.
Beautiful. She's beautiful. I can tell you take care of her really well. Okay, so let's start off with our, you know, our first question. Let's go over a couple of your accomplishments. You've been on the board for nearly eight years and you've carved out some solid wins in that time for residents in your district. And I was hoping that you could just provide some details for our folks who are maybe new to District Five, the Lemon Valley, Palomino Valley area, who are living up there, and share how you've been instrumental. You know, maybe you could start off with the Palomino Valley Volunteer Fire Department, how you worked with them.
Well, I donated fifteen thousand from my funding that I am allowed discretionary funding and to bring the, the station up to ADA qualifications. And so, and then, you know, always helping bring in flags, make sure they have a flag there and, and that sort of thing, since it was kind of shut down for a while at the beginning of my, my term. But now it's being brought back online, thank goodness, because we've had some very serious fires out here.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's awesome that you're taking care of those guys out there. We need to take care of our firefighters and those dry parts. So I also understand that the folks in the Cold Springs area are really pleased with some, you know, recent changes that you were able to bring about. Those residents had some needs and they went directly to you and you heard their, you know, their concerns and you stepped in. What was going on with those residents in Cold Springs? And when was that? Can you tell us the timeframe?
Back in the beginning of my term, first term, they were saying that they could really use a van, some kind of transportation for the seniors to be able to get to town, since it's quite a distance. And they, they have, you know, medical needs and, and doctor's appointments, that sort of thing. Just a shopping trip, you know, or whatever their needs are. So that was the first thing that I was able to do for them. And then we were able to get automatic doors that open on demand, you know, just push a button and the door opens for those in wheelchairs and who had that sort of thing. So
Huge.
So
Absolutely.
Quite a bit, so.
Fantastic, fantastic. And, you know, that, that's what people need in a commissioner. They need to know that their commissioner is on their side, that they're going to be available when they call and that they're not going to kind of poo-poo their requests and, you know, ignore them. And so that must be why you, you have been re-elected into your post. How many times then would that be?
Well, just the one time so far.
Okay, okay, perfect. Yeah. Awesome, awesome. So those are just two little clear-cut examples that involve, you know, your residents needing some assistance and entities that serve the community, being able to be maintained and, and have their services even expanded and made more efficient for, for users. So that, that's kind of your typical commissioner kind of stuff, right? And, and, but then, on the other hand, life can bring us some surprises, right? That's, that's part of life. And so a good example of just the unexpected coming in. And I recall this, I'm sure a lot of people that lived here recall the headlines and, and saw, went out and saw the massive flooding that we had in 2017 at Swan Lake. Now, I know that was, you know, a few years ago, but that was huge at the time. I mean, it was, it was crazy for those residents' homes that were right near Swan Lake and Lemon Valley. And what was that flooding like for those, those residents? Like, what, what happened to those poor folks?
It was horrific. It just moved right in and, and took over several streets of homes in, in that area. And it just stayed and stayed. So even when we had the governor up on Tupelo visiting with the neighbors there, a tear came to his eyes. He said this was the worst thing he had ever witnessed in his state. And he was, he was just really, really sad about it. And so I figured, so our governor came and, and was so good to come and actually view it himself rather than just sending somebody out. We felt like Governor Sandoval was pretty special that day. Emergency was called and, and, but the flooding just stayed and stayed.
Right.
It was, it was really horrific, you know? People didn't really have anywhere to go. Some of them had to go to Reynolds in town and that sort of thing and leave their animals. And, and there were, it was horrible. It was really horrible and it was unnecessary that it happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, how were, how were you able to intervene in that situation? Once it was clear that, you know, the, this floodplain, I guess, type of area is not, it's not dissipating. You know, it's, it's damaging the surrounding area and the homes and, and the residents are, you know, really being affected.
Oh, yeah. Well, I felt that it was my job, since it was in my district, that I, I do something. And I couldn't get anybody else to, to figure out any help for the people there. And so I went to Washington DC and was able to talk to some very nice people there and who contacted the FEMA people and the Corps of Engineers to develop a plan to come put even, even something temporary. But we needed something to relieve the pain that was being caused. So they decided to come to our representative and, and our, actually our gentleman lobbyist and was very responsible for helping. And the Corps of Engineers came and they, they started putting up a barrier. It was called the Haskel Barrier, which kept the waters out for quite a while until it was supposed to be just temporary. You know, and we tried to find some, some permanent cures or I did, I mean, I was looking for some way to prevent this from happening again. Way to solve it, you know?
Yes.
Happen again. So I first presented a, a plan to elevate the homes. I had gone around to all the homes that needed taking care of and being protected. And I had an engineer, water engineer from town that helped me. And we discovered how many homes needed protection. And, and I worked with a, a home mover that was capable of lifting homes up and, and placing them on a taller foundation, which would have solved the problem of the flooding that was, you know, comparable to what that was, you know?
Right.
And so I, I did all the work and got all the paperwork together and did estimates. I brought a contractor out to do estimates and, and it was pretty well put together. And, and even talked to FEMA about doing the elevations. It was very similar to what they do in the southeast
Okay.
of our country.
Okay.
They elevate homes to remove them from the flood zone.
Right.
So, so I brought this to the board, but I, I had had so much trouble getting them to listen to me that, that I, I had to go because they would always interrupt me when I was speaking. And so I went to the podium for the three-minute thing and gave the information on it and asked for it to be on the agenda, which never happened. So the next thing I decided to do, because that was the only way I could do it without being interrupted.
Right. So you're saying that instead of being treated with the equal respect with your peers on the board, that they kept overrunning you, so you had to go to the public comment session of that meeting where you're allowed, like, what is it, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, so.
I can talk fast.
My gosh, that is, that is something. I, I don't think that's right.
I want, don't want to have to yell at them or anything like that or do the same thing they are. Tried not to be rude, so I tried to figure out ways to get the message across so that people could hear that we actually had a possibility of help. And so that didn't work. Nothing would get done. It just, I asked and asked for it several times. It never got on the agenda, thanks to the chairman at the time. So the next thing I did was I thought, okay, so there's got to be another way we can do this that they would agree with. So I talked to people in Washington DC. I talked to an engineer who designed, went out at his own cost. And he designed a reservoir. We talked to people in Washington DC that would, you know, to get their opinion on whether this would work. And what it was, was a reservoir on BLM property. Well, I put it all together and I did the same thing. I went before the board in the three-minute period, so I wouldn't be interrupted, and presented it. And to no avail. I mean, they just looked disgusted about it because they, they, for some reason, just seemed to not care whether we did anything or not. It was just unbelievable.
I, I, that was the word that was right in my head just now, just unbelievable. You just said my thought.
Yeah, it was incredibly.
I, I, you know what? I just dare to say the word abusive, because you, you have a solution right in front of you. This is the reason for your office. Here it's being presented. You reject it. You don't even let, you don't even let the commissioner get on and get an agenda item on there. So then you, you, you go back to FEMA, you go back to these experts and you find a different solution using our land, BLM land. Okay, that's, that is our nation's, that is our land. And all you're going to do is pull water, just let that water run off to create a reservoir, which could probably be used in a lot of cool ways, I would imagine. And, and that was not even really given a hearing. It was, so it was not even allowed to be voted upon?
Absolutely, yeah. It was unbelievable.
And I'm sorry, but who was the chairman of the board at that time?
Oh, it, it shifted back and forth between all the different commissioners.
Okay. Okay, well, um, yeah. So they never really gave you, it sounds like, a, a reason for their lack of support on these long-term, creative, proactive solutions, which sound very common sense to me. If this is being done all over the southeastern US, it's not like you were bringing up to them some crazy experimental, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, you know, hypothesis solution. You were just saying, hey, this is done all over the place and this is commonly, you know, the common cure for this situation. And did anybody ever follow up with you? Did any individual commissioner, and you don't have to say a name, of course, but ever give you a reason why the, the residents of Lemon Valley were just disregarded in this way?
Nobody. It was like, it never happened. And they, they actually treated the public very rudely as well. When they come to beg for help, I mean, a whole group of citizens from Lemon Valley would come in and, uh, from other places too, because people cared. Cared. But it was kind of like, like we were saying, unbelievable that no reaction, no action, nothing.
Right. And you know, and that's why I use the word abuse, because, I mean, a, a, as a resident, if, you know, everybody out there listening, think about it if it was you. If you're in a spot in the, in the Truckee Meadows, and we have a few of them that are flood zones, floodplains, and, and that unfortunate thing happens, you expect that the people who your taxes go to pay are going to be there for you. And, and, and when you're treated with, you know, disdain and, you know, ignored, that's unacceptable. That's unacceptable. So I, I can certainly see why, you know, you were re-elected, because you, you do your job, you know? You, you're, you're at least fighting. You get things done for your folks and it's, you know, it's a little bit out of your control. If you have, what, four other commissioners on the board besides you and, and none of them pull together as a team. You know, they don't, they're not seeing that your district is, is, is important. And so then they just block these things. That, that, that just sounds really, really dysfunctional. It doesn't just sound dysfunctional, it is dysfunctional.
Yeah. And when you consider that, that people have to think about these things that are in the middle of the flood, the waters, that there were so many things that brought the level of the groundwater up. You know, there was the importation of water from the Vidler system. There's all the effluent coming into the lake from the sewer system, the Reno sewer system and that Washoe County sewer system, which is right in the, in the, in the lake. And so, I mean, thinking about those things that are coming to your house and surrounding your house and you have to walk in it and your, your, your dog's walking through it, drinking water out of that water. It was very scary. There were, were algae that, very, very dangerous algae that formed. And it was such a long, long time that it was, it's like a bathtub, but with no drain.
Oh, now, did, do we have, at that time, did we have any reports of people getting ill from?
Yes, there were.
I mean, so those folks could have turned around and sued.
They could have. Then they, they did, they did sue Reno and they won the case there.
Oh, really? And, and how much money? Do you recall what, what they won?
I remember it was, it was several million, as I recall.
Several million. So, right. So, I mean, that could have all been avoided.
It could have. It could have. It was planning.
With planning?
Responsible, responsible planning.
And, and I mean, I, it sounds like you were talking to the, you know, several different groups of people and FEMA and, and civil engineers and Army Corps of Engineers and all that. So, I mean, that's who you go to for that. So the channels were all appropriate and you were engaged in a, in a quick, you know, timely response. You know, but, but that obstructionism on the part of the other commissioners ended up causing us taxpayers to pay more money than, than we would have had to if, if we just took care of things right the first time by adopting this, one of the solutions that, you know, that, that you mentioned today, that reservoir. You know, it's, um, yeah, that, that's something, that is something to, to think about there. That's shameful. That's shameful. Um, so now, we know that a lot of folks, like you, like you said, are, are moving here. They're, they're coming here for jobs with the tech sector growing here. So there's a lot of development in District Five. And, and a lot of the draw, as we know, those of us that live here, is all of our outdoor recreational opportunities. People really love that aspect of living in this, you know, Reno, Sparks, Lemon Valley, this whole zone. We're close to areas to hunt, you know, we're not too far away from Tahoe and all of that great stuff. And so you get a lot of hunters out here and a lot of people on dirt bikes and quads and all that great stuff. And so we're blessed to have those recreational opportunities here due to our climate and, and the amount of open space that we enjoy. And so that, that makes me think of another item that I know that you were involved with, planning and researching and working on for the people. And, and can you share with us about the designation of land that you worked on for a while so that people could have more, more open space to play and enjoy? And what, and, and can you tell us the timeframe on that one too, Ms. Jean?
Well, I think you're probably talking about the, the land that I was trying to get for these people to be able to go shoot their guns and target practice and that sort of thing, that would be safe and all that. And so we did, I did find with the help of a citizen from Cold Springs, I, I got temporary or, you know, preliminary approval for use of the 660 acres. Just, you know, got it started. And, and they could have had, and this was over on the west side between Cold Springs and the Red Rock area.
Okay.
And so we brought it to the people of Silver Knolls and we brought it to the commission and all that. And of course, we could not really get it on, on the agenda in any form that would have been useful. So we ended up, it just kind of died. This morning, I get a call and the only public shooting area that's legal for people to go and cite their rifles in is out here in Palomino Valley where I live. And they shut it down. One week before hunting season starts, they shut the shooting range down. People, where are they going to go? They're going to have to go out to the desert and shoot to cite their rifles in. Because, you know, they want to be able to get a good shot at whatever they're shooting and not just maim the animal. So they, they want to be very careful to, to be sure that they're doing the right thing. And, and, and it's just, it's just like, we want to cause accidents here in this county. We want to cause fires. I, I just can't understand why we're so reluctant to, to do the right thing. So anyhow, we could have had another alternate shooting range.
So like when you, this comment that you just said, it's, it's almost like we want to, you know, we're setting things up to where we do end up having an accident. By that, you mean if we had a space away from everybody that was large enough where, you know, it was very safe and people could cite their rifles and they could, you know, they could do their target shooting out there far away from people, then it, it would be safer, right? Because, you know, I guess the counterargument is, oh, we cannot have people citing their rifles and shooting near, near, near homes because if that was to ignite a fire, then our neighborhoods would be endangered and we got to control that. That's unnecessary. So, I mean, you, it sounds like you're coming from the perspective of, okay, let, let's do something about that. Let's go ahead and take care of that. Let's set aside an area totally far. I mean, you know, not, not, not the North Pole, but far away from neighborhoods where people can still do what they love to do here in Nevada, using Nevada's land. And they can be out there and it will not be accident-prone toward people or endanger people or it's in a, it's earmarked out, so it's safe. Right, right. Because, you know, opponents to this kind of thing, apparently, you know, I believe, have the, the mind frame of people shooting out, you know, out nearby cause fires. They cause fires in our area. But is that really the truth or is that just what the media puts out there?
That's kind of a media thing, I would say.
Right.
Maybe the county has part to, is part to blame because of their information, the way they do it. So I don't know. It's just, it's just wrong.
It's just wrong?
Responsible.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I, you know, I have friends that live all over the valley and the ones that live way out in Spanish Springs, gosh, a few times this summer when I've been to my friend's house, I, I hear, I hear people shooting when we're eating outside, you know, and it's like, um, you know, that, that to me is a little alarming because it's like right by a neighborhood. So I wish that, I wish that we did have something like what you're talking about. More of that, that is further out to give people options, you know?
It was in a good, safe location. In fact, the county already has a lease on forty acres of that 600 acres. So we, it would have just fallen right into place quite well. And there was really perfect locations for backdrop for shooting against, you know? It's, uh, it would have been very good and it would have saved us some fires, I'm sure. So now, see, the people don't have a choice this week. They do not have a choice. So they're going to be out on BLM, which is legal.
Right.
They have the right to do that when we could be responsible and, and prevent the problem.
Right.
It just, it's just the way it is.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact, though, that you're, you know, thoughtful about these things and that you're assertive in saying, you know, here's the problem, here's the solution, here it is. So, well, um, I, I see a theme or a pattern, like I'm saying right now, that, that, you know, you, you have carved out a profile in, in your time on the board where you are just, you're, you're one of us. That's how I feel. Like you just look at the problem and then just look for the common sense, the common sense solution, not a pie in the sky, not some, you know, crazy expensive thing to do, but just look around at, at what we have available and, and offer solutions. And, and that's why you, you were re-elected and I hope that you'll get re-elected again on November eighth. And I'm sorry to hear, you know, about these examples where you, 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 you operate as best you can in a bit of a hostile climate, is how it sounds to me, just trying to do your job. And so that's, that's, that needs to change. That needs to change. So you, I'm just gonna let folks know a couple of other items that Jean has been instrumental in being a positive force for good on. You've designated those suicide funds that you have access to for several, several good works. You've given ten thousand dollars to the Veterans Guest House. So our, our awesome vets have a place to stay when they're coming in for treatment. You've also given ten thousand to the Salvation Army Human Trafficking Program, which we know that that human trafficking and sex trade is monumental in in our state of Nevada compared to other states. It's a massive problem here. And that's, that's a whole nother show, I guess. And then you've also given twenty thousand dollars to the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand, to Awaken, which again is regarding the sex trade. They rescue human trafficked people and help them to kind of get hidden for a while and and have some sanctuary while they rebuild their lives. That's a wonderful organization. If anybody wants to look into Awaken, I highly recommend it. And then there's many items here. There's about, there's about ten listed that that you've given money out to. So that's fantastic. I wa, I want to give everybody your website if they want to learn more, Ms. Jean. Do you can, do you know that website? Or I can give it out if you'd like?
It's voteherman.com.
So, voteherman.com, you can see more of the information that I'm listing regarding who Jean has helped. And she will have an opponent this November eighth. Edwin Lingar is the opponent running in her race for District Five County Commissioner. So please remember Jean's name. And if you think that it sounds like she's done a good job, which she definitely has. And we appreciate you coming on our podcast today, Jean.
You're very kind. Thank you so much.
Yes, so wonderful. So everybody remember Jean on November eighth, or if you're doing your early voting and you're in her district, that is the person who's gonna fight for you and who's gonna recommend good solutions. And we need to get more people in like Ms. Jean. So, thank you very much. And we appreciate your time and we would love to have you back anytime you'd like to come on.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So